Okay. It's so stupid.
Well, before we start the meeting, I'd just like to say, I'd like seeing our Band of Blues Brothers back there.
Oh.
A little pun there. Okay, meeting for July 22nd will come to order, please. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Mr. Gault.
Present.
Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kayler.
Present. Tonight, we have a special guest to help us with our invocation. State Representative Jer Watkins is here tonight, and our pledge of allegiance will be Kyle Johnson. He's a student at St. Mary's High School. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. It's an honor to be with you. I had the privilege of sitting with you for six years, and that was six good years of my life. I really enjoyed serving down here, and what made it so much fun was y'all guys and the employees and serving the public. It was a good time, and I enjoyed it, and every minute of it. Shall we pray? Father God, as we come to you in prayer, Lord, we just thank you for this day, and thank you for all you've done for all of us. Thank you for the salvation we have through your Son, Jesus Christ. You created us to love and serve you, and we pray that you'd help us to be able to do that on a daily basis, and we thank you for this mayor and commission who love this community and serve this community to try to make it a better place to live, to give it a better quality of life, provide job opportunities and educational opportunities for our people here, and they're the reason that Paducah is a wonderful place to live, filled with wonderful people and great employees, and we just thank you for their service. It is a sacrifice, but their hearts are in it for the right reason, to make this a better place, and that's exactly what they do every day, I know. And so, we thank you for them. Thank you for everyone here. Thank you for the employees. Just thank you for all your many blessings. Just pray you'll be with everyone tonight and help us all to make the right decisions and continue to make this a better place to live, and we pray for our leaders at the national state and here at the local level also. We give you the thanks for all things and ask forgiveness where we fail you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
City manager, any additions or deletions?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We have a couple of presentations tonight. First, we have McCracken County Humane Society Pals and Paws Day Camp, and this was a project by Kyle Johnson, who did our pledge of allegiance. So Kyle, you want to come up and talk about your project, and it's for your Eagle Scout?
Yes.
Kyle is the grandson of friend Johnson, who's in our audience tonight, and the son of, help me with your mom and dad's name.
Brian and Jennifer Johnson.
And you have your brother here tonight, too?
Yes.
Another all proud of you, so go ahead.
Well, Pals and Paws Day Camp was a great success, and the mission of the camp was to teach kids to take care of and train a dog, and to teach the dogs basic training and proper behavior with both dogs and people. So, on any given day, we would, we would, the counselors and I would show up about an hour early, and we would have our meeting, and we would talk about what we could have done better the day before and what we're gonna do today, and once all the campers showed up, we would get the dogs out, and we would do their training exercises, and then we would run around with them and play fetch and whatever. And so, by, by the end of the week, all the campers and, all the campers had gotten very attached to their dogs, and the dogs had gotten attached to their campers, and all the dogs had shown immense improvement in their training and their behavior, and the campers all had the experience that they needed, that they didn't need help from the counselors or anything. They were very independent towards the end of the week. And on the, on the last day, Mayor Kayler and the, some of the members of the Board of Directors of the Humane Society came and visited our graduation ceremony and spoke with us, and it was, and we had the Paducah Bank ice cream truck there, and it was a very fun day, and it was a very fitting ending to a very successful and rewarding week.
And we had the K-9 dog there, too?
Yes, we did. We had, yeah, we had a K-9 unit from the Paducah, the Paducah City Police Department.
What gave you the idea to do this for your Eagle Scout project?
I was offered the project from my, from my scout master, because I'm not the only one that's able to do their, their Eagle Scout project right now, but he said that he thought I was the only one that could do it.
Well, good luck with your, do you have to do any more projects for your Eagle Scout? I'm sure several that you have to do.
No, I don't have to do any more projects. I just have to finish up merit badges and things like that.
Well, I always admire young men that work toward their Eagle Scouts. It's a big accomplishment, and you all are future leaders of our nation, so thank you for what you do. Do y'all have anything for?
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
For this project.
Good job.
Very nice project.
Good work, Terry. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Police and Fire Fighters Pension Fund. Leon Dodge wants to speak to us on this. If you'll come on up, Leon.
Mayor and Commissioners, and City Manager, I'm Leon Dodge, representing the retirees under Chapter 95 of the state statute. After the budget was over, I went to the city manager and asked him to give us a 3% raise, and I don't know why I waited till after the budget was over, but I did.
I don't remember that you.
And he said, you know, we talked, and then he got up and went in his office and come back and said, 3% scares me, and so we discussed it, and finally, we decided on a 2% raise, and I'd hope you would vote for it tonight. And I'll give you a little history on this pension board, and I've been on it for a few years. We have, on this pension fund, we have 60 still living, and with a monthly pension plan, is $116,664. Average monthly pro, payment is $1,940. Highest monthly paid is $4,304, and lowest paid members of this fund is $723 a month, and we've got 11 of those, and it's pretty hard to try to, probably they draw two or $300 a month pension, Social Security, and let's see now, who are we? Normally, receiving lower monthly payments is 11, and the number receiving 3,000 and more is 10, and number receiving 20,000 and more is 9, and the number receiving 723 to 1,000 is 21, or to 2,000. And I guess that they all call this the old pension plan, and I guess it is. We've got one lady on this pension plan that's 95 years old. We've got six retired World War II veterans, and we've got several Korean War veterans still on this plan, and the average age of a, is a, oh, Korean War veterans, it's gotta be in the 80s, lower 80s. The World War II veterans are 98, 99, 88, 88, 9, and 91, and I guess it, you could say it's an old plan. And part of us, with the fire department, I know more about, and I do the police department, but I'm representing them here, some, a lot of us worked 20, 25, 35, and one guy worked 37 in eight months, and it's working on this plan today. And I would ask you to please give us a 2% increase in pay. That would make us a half percent a year for seven years, and that's pretty low. And I appreciate for your time, and if you've got any questions, I'll be trying to, I'll try to answer them.
Well, Leon, it might be good for John or the city manager to give a little bit of background on, you know, how we got to where we are.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, so, so people would understand it a little bit better.
Yeah.
Do you want to do that?
Well, briefly, it is a code chapter that the city participated in for a number of years for a group of employees, that this plan has been inactive for a period of time in terms of new employees entering it, so it's been a matter of, of the solvency in the sense of the plan being financially solvent to meet the obligations. Going back to 2005, the city found the plan sufficiently insolvent to necessitate folding a pretty sizable bond issue, to bring it up, to make it capable of meeting its obligations. And since that, for the past several years, even after that, the city has needed to appropriate funds in the annual budget to meet the annual pension obligation, so kind of rifling down to the issue of annual increases to the participants, the law states that the pension board, of which Leon, are you chairman? Is that the title?
Right.
Pension board has the authority to make increases to the pensioners annually if the fund has sufficient means to do it. In other words, they can do that on their own. That is not the case, and it has not been for a period of time. The last time there was an increase in annual payments to the pensioners was 2008, so for the past six years annually, or five years actually, the participants in the pension have in fact seen no increase. So, the fund, again, because it is not generating sufficient money to meet its annual obligations and relies on a pretty significant appropriation for, from the city, does not have the ability, nor does the board, to make an increase. The city is allowed statutorily to do that if it feels it has the means to do it. The past several years, with budgetary challenges that we faced, it was a pretty easy determination that, that it didn't. I think one of the things that encouraged Leon to contact me this year was some indications that we gave throughout the budget preparation, that things had loosened up a little bit this year. We'd seen some revenue trends turn around and so on and so forth, so we were able to view this in a little different context than, than we had for the past several years. So Leon did bring the request before me for 3%, which I think he's correct in terms of my reaction to that, and we did discuss lower numbers. Rather than bring something to you for action tonight, I thought it'd be best that a presentation be made, an explanation be made, and any questions answered that you might want answered before anything was brought forward to you. So that's the purpose of Leon's visit tonight, and if there are further questions I can answer, or John, we'd be happy to do that.
Any questions for John or city manager?
I've got one. John or whoever, Jeff or John. All right, so, how does this work? My guess is it's not as simple as saying, well, 2% would amount to how much money and...
It actually is, because the whole pension fund is, been actuarially studied and determined, so the way it would work is that whatever, if the commission decided upon an increase, that we would be able to calculate the necessary payment into the fund for that increase, and just to make it in simple round numbers, the calculation for a 1% increase figured actuarially across the board would be about $105,000, John, is that right? Give or take a few cents. So the effect of that would be, for every 1%, it would require an injection into the fund of $105,000. And the way the fund is set up now, in order to ensure its continued soundness, is that any increase in obligation to the fund is required to be prefunded, in a word.
So it's not a pay-as-you-go?
As a result of the, of the work done in 2005 that necessitated the, the bond issue and the injection in, it was determined at that time, and I think very appropriately, that in the future, any increase in obligations of the fund would be prefunded so that the ability to ensure that the money was there going forward was, was sound.
Where's that, where's that language?
John, can you answer that specifically?
What's the question?
Where is the language that requires that it has to be prefunded?
Well, whenever Jones was mayor, we started as a policy that the city, rather than to, if we gave raises to the pensioners, you could, like the city had done for many years prior to that, you could just fund them that year, and it was not a great business decision to make, because when you did that, the liabilities continued to rack up, because you kept paying people. So back at that time, the city took the position that we would, if we gave any raises at all, we would pre-fund it, so that the liability doesn't get worse, and so that's why we did that.
Could that be changed?
If you changed it, then what you would do is you'd create future liability, which you would, it'd cost you a lot more to pay for it later than now.
If you change it, you go back to create another unfunded liability, which is the point of doing it in 2006.
That's what I was trying to say. I may have, that's what I've been saying, correct?
But, as I, and correct me if I'm wrong, we just, this is what we just reissued, the bond we reissued with cost savings on for the new negotiated interest rate, correct?
That is absolutely correct.
I, I think that's why we wouldn't want to do that, because we don't want to create another unfunded liability.
But we bonded money to put the money in this fund.
Correct, but we just reissued this bond. Correct, but with a substantial cost savings on.
Yes, ma'am.
And this would not eat up all that cost savings, would it?
No, should not.
I think the cost savings on the bond was about $365,000 over the remaining life of the bonds, which is what, how many years?
Another 10 or 15 years.
10 or 15 years. So, I mean, that's one way to look at this, in terms of the effect of that refunding to quote-unquote "free up" that money, however, that's only half of the issue, because if we were to do something here and pre-fund it, that means we'd have to find the cash. So we would have to go into the general fund, unobligated reserve, to do that, and again, we think there's some ability to do that now, where clearly our position has been for the last several years that that, that there was not.
My other question, Jeff or John, is when I'm reading this on the second page, and it has the widows in regards to the regular, am I understanding that by KRS, that the, the widows have to receive the same cost of living allowance as a Social Security pensioner?
Right.
But the regulars aren't, we're not obligated to pay that same? So the widows get a different benefit than the actual people who serve?
Yes, the, they call them minimum wage Social Security widows, and the reason they call it that, KRS says that whatever is given to the Social Security folks across, you know, federal, federally, whatever they get, that's what this group of folks would get, and have for many, many years, and so the city has obligated to fund that, no matter what, whether we like it or not, that's something we have to do, because KRS says we do.
As long as they're alive.
Correct, correct, correct.
You're on $1,100 a month, or $700.
Right.
And participants in this plan did not participate in Social Security, is that correct? Neither the employees nor the city?
No.
Paid into that? So this was the entire retirement asset that was being created during their employment?
Social Security, anything else today?
So 2% would cost us what?
About $210,000, 2%.
But that, I mean, you're paying for the rest of life. That's it, one payment. You don't have to pay anymore.
It's a one-time hit?
Yes.
And one and a half would be how much?
About $50,000 less than that.
So, do you want us to?
Think about it.
Talk about, think about it and do, make this into an ordinance for next week?
Well, yeah, we would need to put it in, in action form. I'm not sure if that's municipal order or ordinance.
Municipal order, probably.
Probably, probably would be a municipal order, so.
That we want to do.
Yeah. Well, I'll intend to bring something forward and, and take any feedback that you might offer back to me on what you're interested in.
Well, I mean, I can tell you what I, how I feel about it right now.
Okay.
I mean, given the 2%, and it's not gonna eat up the cost savings, and the cost savings is over the, the time period that we financed the, the bond, and this is a, a one-time hit, and I'm a little embarrassed that the widows are, have been getting the, the cost of, you know, have been getting an increase, and I understand why, and I understand we haven't been able to afford it, but now, since we can do it, I would like to see us do it, is my position.
The, the situation prior to this year was such that, explained by the city manager, we didn't, we didn't have the, the room to do what we are talking about doing now. Now that we, now that we can, I think we should, and that's, that's, that's the way I feel about it. We should do it. If we can do it, we should do it now, and help our folks out.
So are we talking, is it, what do y'all, do y'all want to?
I like to think about it.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I've never experienced this, so I'm a little moved by this, so I like to kind of look about it.
Sandra.
I, I have a couple more questions. I'll just follow up with the city manager on those. I guess.
Bring something back next week.
Are the widows part of that 11 that are receiving the lowest monthly payment?
They are, the same, same people.
Okay, so they're part of that, so they have been getting a raise?
They have been.
But they have been at the lowest amount?
Yes, and they continue to be at the lowest. Now, it may be a little confusing. Now, the folks that are, that are the minimum, Social Security, they are widows, but there are other folks that are also widows that are not getting the minimum. They could be getting a lot more than that. They're not the same people.
Okay.
That's why I didn't articulate that very well when I said I was a little embarrassed, because I didn't realize that one group's getting an allowance and getting a raise, so to speak, and then others were not, that.
So how many of the 60 are the widows that have been getting the raise?
11.
Oh, 11, okay. But they're not all at the lowest amount, payment, that's what you're saying?
Well, there, there's 60 people, what is there, half of them are women? I don't even know without looking, but of those widows, let's say there's 30, 11 of them are the minimums, and they make $723 a month.
Well, I mean, I think if, if we have the ability to do it, we should.
The retirees get 2.5% a year, and the widows get 1.5%, and these that's getting $700 was low, low paying, they've been retired for a long time.
He's talking about the multiplier, it's 2.5 times the years of service to get their original.
2.5 year service.
Right.
To figure your pension, and the widows get 1.5.
Okay. Thank you, Leon.
I appreciate that you took the vote for it, and some of them really need it.
Thank you. Okay, before we go into our meeting, State Representative Watkins has something that he wanted to announce.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. I do have some good news for you and for Paducah and McCracken County. Last week, a representative from the governor's office was in my office to let me know that he had a half a million dollars for a road project in McCracken County and what did we want to do with that, so I gladly took him up on that, and, and we found a, a road that needed some repair. But while I had him, I wanted to take advantage of the situation, because for years I have, well, I've talked to you, Mayor Kayler, about this road for years, and former Mayor Paxton about this road for several years, and have made phone calls in pass while I was on the city commission to see if we could get something done. I think it is, and the city engineer agreed, we were talking out in the hall before the commission meeting tonight, that this stretch is the worst street in the entire city limits. It's a state highway, so it's the state's responsibility. We would always be in the mix, but we just never made it to the final, on the final radar screen, so we never, the money was never forthcoming, and was, I thought it was gonna be there this year, but it wasn't. So, a little, being a little discouraged, I decided, okay, I've got the right person at the right time in my office, and I took advantage of it, and so the governor approved it, and it's coming out of the governor's transportation budget, and I think it pays to have a good relationship with the governor of Kentucky, certainly, and so I got final approval Friday. So the timing worked good, and the mayor asked me if I would come and do the invocation. I thought, when I found that out Friday, I thought, hey, this is perfect timing. So what we have, and this is locked, $3.7 million, and we're going to redo Kentucky Avenue, you're right. It needs it so bad. I've bought it a lot of times, just because it's so rough, but Kentucky Avenue, now all of it doesn't need to be redone, and we don't have the money for all of it anyway, but Kentucky Avenue from 16th Street down past, a little past 12th Street, it's the worst stretch. It'll be new curbs, gutters, sidewalks. We'll be working with JS, Joint Sewer Agency, and Paducah Water for the, to repair, replace sewers, infrastructure, and new concrete pavement. It won't be asphalt, it'll be concrete, and also, we don't have enough money to go to 10th, but we're going to do the driveways, the two driveways in and out of Randy's Body Shop and Owen Cleaners, which really need it bad, too. So, that's $3.7 million, we'll be on that at least by September, but he said you can mark it down, it's a done deal, it's going to happen, we've got the money, the governor has, has approved it for us. So that, and then also, the $500,000 will go to redo the intersection in the county of Highway 62 and Highway 1322, which is very dangerous, and so that'll eat up pretty much that whole $500,000. So we got $4.2 million coming from the governor's transportation budget for Paducah and McCracken County that, you know, just never seemed to be able to, we hadn't been able to make it happen in the past. So I appreciate the governor, he's been good to Paducah and McCracken County, and it's good to have a relationship with him where you can go to him in his office and get things done, and they're, they're willing to help us if the money's available. And so, I'm thankful to have an opportunity to serve the people of Paducah and McCracken County, and thankful to have an opportunity to work with the governor, to be able to make things like this happen, because certainly this community needs it. Paducah's a wonderful place to live, but that road is just atrocious, and so we're gonna get that taken care of. So I just wanted to make that announcement tonight. Good news.
Yeah, good news.
What is 1322? It's also known as?
It's, I'm not sure what, I've seen it on the map, found it, and I gave the final approval for that, but, do you know what it is, Rick? 1322, I'm not sure what it's, what is it?
Harris Road.
Okay, okay, all right.
62 in Harris Road or 60 in Harris Road?
62.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, sorry.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um... We had another good announcement today. The U.S. Department of Energy today awarded a task order under the Nationwide Environmental Management, the IDIQ, which we've been waiting on. The award is anticipated to support the transitioning and preparing the site for deactivation and decommissioning of the former uranium enrichment facilities. The task order provides extensive and detailed hiring preferences for the available highly skilled labor forces. This will include project management, the Paducah GDP, de-lease planning and facility transfer, decontamination and demolition, environmental services. The task order will contain both firm fixed prices and cost reimbursements. So the estimated award value is approximately four hundred and twenty million over the next three years. So we're happy to get this news today, we can.
Did you say who it goes to?
Yes, it goes to FLOR. So it's, it's good to have a longstanding company that has much experience in decommissioning and cleanup services.
And they are partnered with LADA, who's currently working out there, too, so this is actually good news for those employees as well.
So there will be more jobs out there for folks that have been laid off that possibly can get rehired, so it's good news all the way around. All right. Commissioner Abraham, for the minutes, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for June twenty-fourth, twenty fourteen, June thirtieth, twenty fourteen, July first, twenty fourteen, and July fifteenth, twenty fourteen, so city commission meetings be waived, and that minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second.
Everybody read the minutes. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Jim Smart as a member of the Paducah McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency. This term will expire June thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Jim Smart as a member of the Paducah McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Japam Askew Robinson as a member of the Municipal Housing Commission. This term will expire July twenty-second, twenty eighteen.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Japam Askew Robinson as a member of the Municipal Housing Commission.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint David Mass to fill the unexpired term of Greg Menke, who has resigned to the Paducah McCracken County Riverport Authority. This term will expire September twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in appointing David Mass to the Paducah McCracken County Riverport Authority.
Second, David.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
As always, I want to thank all of these board members that we've reappointed, and the new ones that are taking on new roles in the city and county, serving both. We'll move on to motions. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Notes of cancellation for city of Paducah Board of Commissioners meetings for June seventeen twenty fourteen and July eighth twenty fourteen. Certificate of Liability Insurance and Right-of-Way Bond for Hayes Backhoe and Concrete. Performance Bond for Youngblood Escrevating Contracting LLC for the Noble Park Lake Bank Stabilization Project. Quick Claim deed for twenty-two-eight South Seventeenth Street with George Valmer. Commissioners deed for six-two-five George Street. Contract for Services, Paducah Concrete, uh, I'm sorry, Paducah Concert Band, Paducah McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Contract Agreements. Change in Terms of Agreement with Ventura Bank for revolving line of credit for Fountain Avenue and Lower Town Neighborhood Revitalization Project. Engineering Public Works Department One-Year Renewal Agreement with Bluegrass Fire Equipment Company Incorporated for the structural firefighting turnout gear for use by the City of Paducah Fire Department. Memorandum of Understanding with Genova Products and GPEDC, Inc. for Fifty-four Hundred Commerce Drive. Contract with TNT Cleaning for event setup and cleaning services at the Robert Cherry Civic Center. Agreement with Shawnee Professional Services for the Oliver Church Road Improvement Project. Agreement with Nichols Electric Company, LLC for the Fire Station Number One Generator Project. Twenty-fourteen, twenty fifteen Kentucky Pride Fund Household Hazardous Waste Management Grant Agreement. Financial Advisor Agreement with Richmond James, with Richmond James and Associates, Inc. for the Police and Firefighter Pension Plan. Commonwealth of Kentucky Office of the Governor Department for Local Government Recommendation Order for KRS one zero three point two one zero Bond for the Paducah Convention Hotel. Notification for Paducah McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency for the CPIU Rate Adjustment. Letter of Engagement for Bond Counsel for approximately four million two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for City of Paducah, Kentucky Taxable General Obligation Refunding Bond Series two zero one four B Police and Firefighter Pension Plan. City of Paducah Human Rights Commission Annual Report twenty thirteen.
Second.
You're welcome.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Our municipal orders, Commissioner Galt, please.
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah ordered that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Need a second.
Second.
Cindy.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Wanted to, like last time during personnel actions, we wanted to recognize a couple of retirements, and I'd like to ask Chief Kyle and Chief Barnhill to come and help us recognize a couple of the personnel actions we have for tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. Thanks for the opportunity to come before you tonight. This, and this is a mixed feeling ceremony, so to speak. We, we look, we all look forward to retirement and hope that we can reach that and, and move on to something else, but it also recognizes it's a, it's a change in a chapter in our life, and we've got one of those for ourselves happening tonight. Darrell, if you would, come on up. Darrell's, Darrell's leaving at the end of this month, effective date's going to be August the first, but he's been with us for twenty-two years and eleven months. And I, I have to say, from a chief perspective, that I'm proud to say that he's supported me through all of that. He's been involved in many of our special programs, special operations programs that we've done, and, and never faltered in supporting any of those, any of those things. And that, and that's something for us, you know, but to have that kind of commitment from our employees gives us strength to look forward, to do different things, and to make changes in the department, and it's an important aspect of what we do on a, on a day in and day out basis. So we'd like to bring him forward, to recognize him and his family tonight for his long tenure service in the department, and, and wish him well in new endeavors.
Darrell, we, we certainly want to thank you for the twenty-two years that you've served the people of Paducah and McCracken County, and wish you well in your retirement. You look like a young man.
Why, thank you.
I know you probably want to move on with your life and even serve the community in another way, so would you like to say something tonight?
Well, it's, it's been a privilege and an honor, I said, almost twenty-three years. I, I can say that I woke up just every day and, and honored and happy to come to work. I've enjoyed serving the citizens, and I've made a lot of good friends, I've had some good times, I've had not-so-good times. I was a former vice president, president of the union at times, Richard, Richard's seen me in action, and, but the relationship's been so good for the last several years, it makes it hard to leave, not only with, with Chief Kyle and, and the commission, just the whole atmosphere is so much better today than it has been at times. I've always enjoyed it, but it really makes it hard to leave right now. I, I wasn't planning on leaving, I just had some opportunities kind of fall in place, and I'm leaving to be a, a flight medic with Air Evac out of Mayfield, so. But just another challenge, and, and excited about that, really sad to leave right now, so, but thank you again, and I, I do appreciate the opportunities I've been.
Come on up, we'd like to shake your hand.
Well, I want to, I want to say a, a couple of things. Wow. I remember when I first met this guy, and I was running for commission very first time, I didn't have a clue about anything, and not that I'm, I'm a genius now, but then it was, it was crazy, and, and Tubbs was, was, was exactly the type of influence I needed. And you talk about those good times, I gotta tell you the story. Well, first, your, is that your daughter?
Yes, my youngest girl, my son, my wife.
We, we were doing this, well, a couple, so this, this, this is your time, so, you know. We were at the top of the rental hotel, and, and it's like, you gotta have a fundraiser. It's like, okay. Well, not counting my family and his, I think there were like nine people there. I mean, it was, it was pretty, you know, but we won, we won anyway. And, and they were little, running around putting their hands in the punchbowl and all that, it was, it was great. My girls were, were small also. But I remember I won, I won that election, and then I, two years later, I ran for reelection, and we're all sitting out at Damon's, this big long table, and C.D. Bradley was covering the, the government at the time, and, and we must have been on a delayed deal here, because I'm looking at the TV out there, and I'm, I'm looking good, man, I'm, I'm in there. C.D. walks in, and I said, hey, C.D., how you doing, man? He said, I'm doing great. Unfortunately, you're not doing so well. And I was like, what are you talking about? I'm, I'm in it. He goes, no. So apparently, he was down at the courthouse in real time, and I'm watching this. So I, I'm, he's talking to me, and I'm looking at this table of all these supporters, and I was like, you guys can go. Y'all can just go, because I lost. And everybody got up, and Tubbs came over, he's like, man, it's, it'll get, it'll get better. But he was, he was there, a good guy, and when all of you guys started going, first responders, had to get all that training, I remember you guys doing that transition, and learned a lot, and I just, you know, I'm going to stop talking, because I'm getting all misty.
Don't, because I will.
Congratulations to him.
Appreciate it.
Good luck on it.
Come on up.
Congratulations. Thank you, congratulations.
Likewise, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, we are here at the, as the police department in a bittersweet time also. If I can get my guys to come up here that are retiring. With me tonight, I have Captain Hodgson, Donald Hodgson, Captain Mark Roberts, and Captain Sean Maxey. Training Officer Rob Estes was unavailable to, to make it tonight, he had a prior commitment. Out of the four gentlemen combined, there's over eighty-plus years of law enforcement. And not only years and knowledge how to work the street, but a lot of behind-the-scenes knowledge. These guys were stakeholders, placeholders, and, and just start a firm standing post for the police department during some rough times. You know, they worked homicide investigations, narcotics investigations, many collisions in which were very serious in nature. So they seen the worst of the worst, but moving forward, they're seeing the best of the best, and that's what we expect for them. We're very elated for them, and, come on up, guys. You guys want to say something? Put you on the spot a little bit?
It's all been rainbows and unicorns the last twenty-one years and nine months. Not really. It's, sometimes it's been a wild ride, but again, it's been enjoyable. Worked with some fantastic people down there. We have an outstanding police department, we have an outstanding chief here, and the leadership that is going to be remaining is going to lead this department for many years to come in the right direction. You should be very proud of them. I know I am.
I've been very fortunate, my career at the police department, I've gotten to do lots of different things and take advantage of that, and thank you guys for that. I'd like to see the city continue to invest in leadership in the department, and that's gotten us where we are today, and I hope that that, that continues, and we continue to be one of the premier agencies in, in the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
Thank you.
Well, this was a very tough decision between the twenty years on the department and the four or five years working during the summers for Parks Department. I've been employed by the City of Paducah for the last twenty-five years, so tough decision. The department is set to do well, got some good people in charge now, and good people moving up, so it's one that I hope to be proud of for the rest of the days, so.
Well, Chief, I just have to say, you know, these three guys leaving, it makes me want to cry, really.
I'm right there with you, Mayor. Yeah. See that every day when I walk in, some empty seats, makes me want to cry.
So we really appreciate your service to the community, and we will miss you, but I understand, you know, retirement happens, and we'll move on, and we've got good leadership, as you said. I will miss Maxey's smile. I love his smile. And Captain Hodgson, we certainly will miss you, and are you still doing your flying, flying lessons? Good. I'm sure you all have other things you'll continue your life and be of great service to our community, so thank you.
Mayor, it's, you remember last week, couple of weeks ago, I think it was last week, woke up fifty-six degrees outside after going through that crazy weather, and you couldn't really appreciate that, that fifty-six degrees, because you had to go through the ninety-eight degree humidity, right? Well, when I first came on as city commissioner back in two thousand, it was crazy around here. I mean, the police department, it was fire department, I mean, we got all kind of stuff going on, man, and, and to see, to see the relationship with the fire department and the police department and, and the commission, the environment that's been fostered over, over the years to get to this point, you really had to go back and go through that to appreciate the comments that these gentlemen stated earlier. And I, I was so glad to be around long enough to see, to see this, and, and a lot of it, you know, the individuals within the department, the leadership from the, from the commission during those turbulent times, and so you guys, in, in my opinion, when I first came on, you guys are leaving the department in much better, much better condition than when I first came on, so I applaud you for that.
Are you going to continue with the Intexication Program at all? I know you've been working with the Cothart family for years on that.
Yeah, we plan to, to continue that, we've got some funding to do that, and the department will be looking for somebody else to, to take my spot. But we've, that's been very successful, we just spoke at a conference in Florida, and we're asked by the City of St. Petersburg to bring the program for, for their high schools in the fall, so that would be a, a huge opportunity for us to, to spread the message and, and try to change people's behavior and, and continue to affect, affect people's lives and, and traffic safety.
Thank you.
I would only make one comment to that, because I know it would be the question of somebody that's watching and the viewers, or in the audience, that is of zero dollars to the city taxpayers, that is all grant funded.
Good answer. But it's, it's such a worthwhile program, and I'm so proud that you all have developed that and turned it into what it is, it's just really, I know, made a difference.
Thank you.
And Captain Roberts, didn't you work with the K-9 unit?
Yeah.
So thank you.
Thank you all.
Mayor, if I may, real quickly, recognize three individuals in the back of the room that are going to attempt to fill the shoes of some of these guys on your paperwork. On your paperwork tonight in front of you have promotions for Captain George Johnson. Well, it will be a captain come August 1st if it's approved. Captain Wes Kimmler and Sergeant Matt Smith. So as I mentioned, they have some big shoes to fill. So we're looking forward to it.
Well, of course, you know, Captain Johnson and Maxi, I'm not sure who has the best smile, but they're both great.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to, did we vote on that?
No, we didn't.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
We'll go on to, we're still under municipal orders. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that municipal order entitled, a municipal order approving and authorizing the execution of an assignment and reaffirmation agreement among City of Paducah, Kentucky, McCracken County, G-P-E-D-C Incorporated, and Paducah Economic Development Foundation Incorporated relating to a public project be adopted.
Second.
Okay. Mayor, I have a quick question about this and either you or Commissioner Wilson probably can answer it. What's the difference between the PED Foundation Inc. and G-P-E-D-C Inc.?
They've just recently changed their name, but I don't think they've changed, done the paperwork yet for it.
Well, there's the board and then they have established a foundation. So I think that's probably what you're asking. The G-P-D-C board and the PED board, I believe, are the same. It's just...
Right, just one's a foundation.
But, and I know, I couldn't read the signature on one. I know it's one signed as chairman and the other one signed as president and CEO, but was it Chad that signed? I couldn't read the signature. But that's what, it was confusing to me. That's why I was asking.
I didn't look to see. Is that on this one?
Mm-hmm. It's attached.
I might could tell on the signature. Well, yeah, there are different things with a foundation that you can do. That's Chad as president and CEO.
And then the chairman is, it would be page three for...
Well, the chairman is Ken Hunt. I don't see his signature on anything.
For the PED, Paducah Economic Development Foundation Inc., it would be page three of the assignment and reaffirmation agreement.
Read it, but...
Well, I just wondered if it was, you know, one and the same. That was what I was getting at because I didn't know.
What's like...
It's definitely not the same signature.
Like some other organizations that have two under the same umbrella.
Okay.
I don't recognize that signature on page three.
Is that an issue? I'm just asking.
We can verify the correctness of the signature when we sign and execute the final documents.
Well, I mean, who's the chairman of PED? I mean, who would be?
Kenny Hunt.
Kenny Hunt. So I'm sure it's his signature. I would hope.
Adam Clerk.
And Stan is the vice chairman.
Right.
Yeah, okay. There you go.
You can't tell by looking.
Okay.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Ordinance is adoption. These are, this is one that we've talked about. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah accepting a 2014-2015 L.A.W. Enforcement Service Fee Grant Award for DUI enforcement by the Paducah Police Department and authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby accepts grant funds in the amount of $8,271 through the Kentucky Justice and Public Service Safety Cabinet for a 2014-2015 Law Enforcement Service Fee Grant Award to be used by the Paducah Police Department for DUI enforcement and hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto.
Second.
City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Ordinance is introduction, so we don't vote on any of these tonight. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an engineering service agreement in the amount not to exceed...
$90,000. $90,340?
$90,340 for professional engineering design service related to revisions of the Riverfront Phase 1B project. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor of the City of Paducah is hereby authorized to execute an engineering service agreement with Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering and Testing Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $90,340 for revisions of the Riverfront Phase 1B project.
Second. Rick?
Mayor Commission, this is a result of, you'll recall that when we went back and looked at the project in Phase 1A of the project, we put that in the hands of the PRDA. They studied it for about 10, 12 weeks. They came back to the commission with the recommendations of the changes and what they wanted to make to that plan. The previous plan that we had could not be put in a bid package without making these alterations. And this contract that's before you tonight is to execute the recommendations that were brought to you by the PRDA.
Any questions?
I got a few. Okay, so, so when we approve this tonight, or excuse me, next week, so we're gonna get plans to go from what was unattainable to something that'll be more attainable. That's where we put out for bid. Now, will Bacon Farmer Workman, will they help you evaluate then the bids? Is that part of this?
This will get you to a qualified bidder.
Okay.
From that point forward, you don't have a professional engineer to represent the construction observation of that project. That's not yet determined. This is to get the plans prepared for bid and get it through the LPA process.
Through the bidding process.
Through the bidding process.
So you would bring those bids back to us?
Yes.
So they will help you in the evaluation of those bids?
In the valuation of the bids, yes.
We're gonna get that, okay.
Yes.
Will we get a, is part of this, will Bacon Farmer Workman, will they sort of, ahead of the bid process, sort of give you a cost estimate? It says, look, we think this is gonna cost this, this is gonna cost this.
Yes, yes. But prior to the bid, prior to the bid, we will have in hand a engineer's cost estimate.
Okay. Is that, and of course, I used to read these kinds of things, as you can imagine, but, and I think you and I talked about this, Rick, okay, I get the $90,000, but there's another about $45,000. Because as I'm reading this, there are less than, I mean, Red Barn and GK and all, I mean, there are less than 10 days in this narrative of where they'll be here in Paducah interacting with you and everybody else. So I need to know something about, there's another $45,000.
Actually, that $45,000 was put in place for construction observation after the bid, but we were not prepared to bring that to you for, we wanted to get to the bid stage first.
The $45,000, it'll be down the road. That's for, if you will, the boots on the ground.
During construction, during construction.
All right, to hold the contractors to do what they're supposed to be doing.
To ensure the integrity of the work.
Exactly, okay. All right, I'm just, okay, so, okay. So the next time we hear from this project, we should have what?
You should have a bid, you should have a bid in hand.
Okay.
I will be bringing a recommendation to you for an award of the project. That's the next time you hear.
Probably this fall sometime?
Fall, I would say late fall for that.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks.
And then what's the timeline after that, Rick?
Timeline, well, the big grant, the big grant that's $910,000 that comes, boat infrastructure grant that comes through U.S. Fish and Wildlife, we want to get started on that as soon as possible. That has a sunset date of September the 15th. So we look to be working, getting things going in January. You might say, well, why January? Well, getting these transit boat dock has a lead time, you know. Once it's put out to bid, they have to manufacture this and get it delivered. So we looked for, during the winter, to get that manufactured and get it delivered during the summer so we can get it installed.
We have to belabor this, but we do get to vote to see what's doable. In other words, you're gonna get these estimates of these bids, and so we do look at this and then...
Sure.
Okay.
We'll do some matchup of the bid estimates. They come in with the resources that we've identified. If there's a gap there, of any size at all, we'll be back with you perhaps before the bids come back.
Right.
Clearly, if there's a big gap, we'll need to be talking to you about that because we may need to take another look at the design or figure out how we're gonna deal with that. We don't want to put you in a situation where we take a bid and come back and we've got a huge gap between resources that have been identified and what was all in the design.
Okay, just so I'm clear in my head, mid to late November would be when we would get it back kind of in our place and then start construction in January and be finished by September 15th.
I would, I would, I would push that back a little bit. Always the holiday season creates interruptions on that. If we have a bidder, if we have a project ready to go to work by the end of January, I'll be very pleased with that.
Okay.
And I just, with the things that we still have to do after we get this, I guess, project compiled the way the recommendation came in, it still has to go to the state to get their approval of that, I guess, how it's been compiled.
I know, there's lots of late time, but we always get hammered about when.
I understand.
So that's why I'm...
And that's the thing about these federal dollars. If it was city dollars, we'd be moving much rapid, much more rapid. But it takes so many different approvals and permits and agencies, it just is endless.
Okay.
Again, I don't want to belabor this issue and I know I'm the skeptic here, but if we get bids back and if they're acceptable to the majority of the commission, the mayor, and if we move ahead, I mean, is the $45,000, in other words, if we say, I mean, we're gonna go forward with this thing, is the $45,000 enough to make sure we got enough boots on the ground, enough eyeballs watching this thing so that, I mean, is that enough help for you?
That's what the professionals have offered as what they believe that would be what it would take. Sometimes you don't use all that money. They're estimating man hours or people hours to execute that, the timeframe of the work. I have to, I have to leave that in their hands on that.
Do you get some input into that? Do we get, I mean...
Sure. For example, a lot of the things that are sent to us, we evaluate and we, I challenge a lot of times, how do you come up with this number? The number that you see before you tonight is not the first number. The number you see before you tonight is much less than the first number because I got my chisel out.
Okay.
So...
All right, well, I just...
Okay.
Madam Mayor and City Commission, since Rick's up there, would it be appropriate to ask him to give an update on a couple of projects that underway right now? The pond bank stabilization and also the bike path underground crossing.
Start with the, start with the Noble Park Pond Bank Stabilization Project. We have pretty much 100% of the demolition complete. We started driving, I think if you've seen in some of the media, we started driving the sheet piling, starting at the bridge, working our way around. There are some things that might look kind of different out there. You'll see a PVC pipe laying on the ground. They're using that as a guide for smoothly putting this, the geometry of this sheet piling in for the bank stabilization. You also notice that we have lowered the water surface elevation considerably, of which yielded that we have concrete shore protection that's been underwater since 1994. And as a result of seeing that, we're like, that's a mighty sturdy asset out there that we might need to consider regrouping with reference to the floating island versus, hey, maybe we can make use of that. And so as a result of, I guess, boots on the ground, looking at that, met with a contractor and we've, contractor come back with a change order, order magnitude, just under $20,000 to maybe consider restoring that island. And then I took him out there and I'm like going, you know, that track hole is pretty expensive and taking that concrete out to the six foot below the surface is gonna be mighty hard on your piece of equipment for that. And so why don't we, and the materials to build this fill-up is right here behind you that got you here on that. So that went from just under $20,000 to around about $2,000. So we are actually gonna make use of that island for less than what we were gonna spend on a floating island. And it's gonna be pretty much restoring it back to what we saw when we were young people. In '94, the water surface elevation was actually raised two feet to make the pond bigger, I guess, more volume, more fish and whatnot. Well, when the water surface elevation came up, it covered up a lot of the assets that were there before '94. Now, I remember as a 10-year-old going out there, I remember seeing that concrete, but at this stage in my life, I'm like saying, well, I think it's gone, but then we lower the water, it's there. So we're making use of that. So that's gonna turn out real well for us. And I think it's gonna come at minimal cost or negligible cost to the overall project. So that's that. The underpass at US 45, you wouldn't believe the amount of traffic that a construction project like that will draw. Even though you put signs and fences to try to protect your, protect the contractor and your exposure in that, it just seems to draw more and more and more people. We had the underpass in. Physically, the structure is in, they're backfilling it. They started the backfill operations this morning. We're looking toward the end of the month, barring no bad weather, that we could have, emphasis on could have, maybe traffic reopen on the Brookport Bridge by the end of the month. However, I cannot speak for the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet as there was damage. You recall, there was damage to the bridge and they need to make some repairs to the bridge, some of the bridge members for that. And I did not, I don't know whether or not they're gonna come in on the tail end of our permit for this activity or not, but there's two things going on there.
Rick, for the understanding of the public, because it wasn't clear from a recent news article what the pretense for the closing of the bridge would have been had we not been doing the tunnel construction, but to your knowledge, would the repairs to the Brookport Bridge necessitate closing of the bridge?
I understand that through talking in the contract community, there's actually been a project let for that. And the project that they've put out requires that one lane of the bridge be closed, of which creates some difficulty for both the traveling public and the contractor. But what has been solicited for bid is taking Brookport Bridge down to one lane. Now, those of us that have crossed the Brookport Bridge, it almost seems like a one-lane bridge by itself, much less cutting that in half, but that's what's out.
Thank you.
So has the tunnel been tagged yet? Any graffiti artists?
Not that I know of.
You and I talked about, was we gonna make it the first night?
Right, right. But that project is moving along very well. And I think the community and trail, bike, all enthusiasts associated with that are gonna be very well pleased when that project's complete. And I'm just 100% sure of that.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the Finance Director to pay Kentucky League of Cities for workers' compensation, liability insurance, and property insurance coverage for the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the Finance Director to pay... The city of Paducah hereby authorizes the Finance Director to pay Kentucky League of Cities in the total amount of $951,770.62 for workers' compensation, liability insurance, and property insurance coverage for the city of Paducah for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. We have for your approval, work comp and liability and property invoices from the Kentucky League of Cities. As we look at the history of these invoices, from 2005, we've been able to put a lot of downward pressure on these, even though the way you calculate work comp, for example, would be using our historic claims coupled with things like payroll, some medical expenses, and those things that always have some upward pressure. So I'm pleased to let you know that the invoices that we have totaled tonight are, represent less than a 1% increase from last year.
That's good.
Did you get bid, was this something that was bid?
This is the third year of a three-year rate guarantee with Kentucky League of Cities.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Commissioner Brows, please.
Alright, uh, I got one? Well, let's see if I've got one to read. Intent annex. Well, I'm not sure I've got one.
Well, you've got one on my paper here.
I've got one to read, uh...
It's the annex.
Okay, it got stuck with another one, sorry about that. Okay. I move the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance extending the boundary of the city of Paducah, Kentucky by intent to annex certain property lying adjacent to the corporate limits of the city of Paducah and defining accurately the boundary of said property to be included within the said corporate limits. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Approving an intent to annex attractive property contiguous to the present city limits located at 2711 New Holt Road containing .7972 acres, more or less.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. I'm very excited actually about the annexation of this property as it's completely surrounded by city limits. But after annexation, we'll be going back to the Planning Commission for a zone change and then coming back before the commission again for a final annexation and zoning. And then we should see some new development there rather quickly.
And that's the corner right behind Lowe's.
That's correct.
Well, Steve's up here. Do you want to tell us a little bit about last weekend?
I would love to, but actually Melinda's here tonight.
I know both of you come up.
Why don't you come on up, Melinda, and talk about Showcase Paducah, I guess referring to? Great.
Very successful event.
Big deal. Showcase Paducah was Saturday, July 19th. We had 22 open houses of our for sale for leased properties. I worked with the realtors and private property owners to coordinate this. We had a great turnout. I've been marketing it for about three months all over. We believe we've had at least over 200 people. We ran out of maps. Steve had to go make me some more about 2:30, and we still had people coming in at 3:30 wanting to do the tours. So it was very successful. I've been getting a lot of feedback. Randy Bridges, he's the head of the Board of Realtors, sent me an email today and said it was very successful for them. So they're gonna keep me posted on, you know, if they sell any of the properties they're leased. I've just been having lots of calls for people that are interested.
Good job, good job.
Thank you. And I came down about two, I believe it was, found a parking place right on Broadway, right there.
I have to admit, it was, it was probably the first time I had toured the Smedley Yizer in detail. Did, did we put that out for bid at one time?
We did put it out for bid, did not receive any proposals. We are currently talking to several possible property owners about that property. Hopefully here sometime in the near future, we'll do another RFP for that property.
Well, I mean, it was a great day. I came down too, walked around, and of course, we couldn't have had better weather, but there were, there was so much excitement. I mean, the store owners, I even just went in, some of the store owners, they were very thrilled with everything that was going on. So thank you, I know you put a lot of hard work into it.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunities. I'm having a lot of fun, so.
Thanks, thank you, Melinda. Okay, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
And you're still here, Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance establishing and approving the Upper Story Residential Grant Program and authorizing the Director of Planning to administer the program and provide financial assistance to eligible applicants for completion of income-producing residential units in historic downtown Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance hereby establishes the Upper Story Residential Grant Program for property owners who are building new residential, commercial structures, or rehabilitating existing structures in historic downtown area for residential use. This program will provide financial assistance that shall not exceed 20% of the construction cost or a maximum of $15,000 per Upper Story residential unit. This ordinance also directs the Director of Planning to administer the program and grants authority to the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to oversee the allocation of funds up to $60,000.
Second.
Thank you.
Very excited about this project, or this program. It has the possibility to bring up to 15 new residential units downtown per year. Obviously, we've had a lot of discussion in the past about roof stabilization, HVAC concerns, facade problems. I believe this will provide some gap financing that will help in the rehabilitation of the entire structure, including retail and first floor roofs, those types of things. So Melinda and I have already been talking to property owners. We think we already have maybe three or four property owners that may be taking advantage of this rather quickly. So I think this is a program, if adopted, will move, move on quickly.
I'd like to remind the Commission as well that this is a program, the resources for which largely come from resources that had previously been part of the PRA department that have been relocated primarily from operational accounts into this capital account. So it's part of the efficiencies we've realized by incorporating that former overhead into two existing departments that help make funding for this possible. I might also mention, as many of you know, and this will be going out shortly, and the fact that the city is bringing Jeff Speck to town, who's the author of The Walkable City, Upper Story Living and Populating Downtown is a key part of, of his, what he talks about as, as key again to revitalizing downtown. So this particular program just fits hand in glove with, with what is, I think, widely accepted to be one of the most important components of downtown revitalization, and that is increasing residential opportunities in the downtown area.
I, I do have a couple of questions. I'm excited about it, Steve, I think it's great. But I guess on page three, number three, where it says, all the permits have to, must have been obtained and the property must be free of all ends and all property taxes must be paid?
Mm-hmm.
When you say all ends, I mean, what if someone takes out a construction loan?
Wasn't referring to that.
You weren't?
No.
Okay, okay. It was just kinda confusing to me and I read through it all the way. That, that was kind of...
I was referring...
Maybe we might should clarify.
Yeah.
You know, cause I thought somebody might be... I just wanted to make sure.
Thinking that that may knock them out, but...
Well, you can get pretty deep in some of those, I don't like...
I'll certainly look at that.
Okay, it's just a thought. It's a great, it's a great program. I, I'm, I'm excited.
I know it's been something that's been talked about for years.
Yeah, it's, it's great.
Well, a couple of weeks ago, you read the letter from the gentleman that bought Michael's Hardware about the roof stabilization. And I talked to him on Saturday and he, he again said, thank you how much it made a difference for his building, which actually helped save the buildings on both sides. And now I think he's interested in Upper Story Living. I don't know if he qualifies for that or not, but I know he was looking at some apartments or some condos.
I think he's looking at condos on the second to fifth floors.
It's a huge building, beautiful.
These type of programs, I, I feel that it helps create an environment so that folks can come and build downtown or, or buy a building, the, the type of, I just feel that it's government's, I feel that our job is to create an environment so folks can, can prosper if they have a, you know, have an idea and it meets the, the regs that, that we lay out and go for it, you know? That's, if you wanna work hard and do it, I don't, I never want to create policies that, that just strangle folks from doing it. But this type of infrastructure is, is, is welcome. So I'm, I'm glad to be a part of that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance, amending ordinance number 2014-5-8136 entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety for the Heads Up, Don't Be Intoxicated Mini Grant Program. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance is being amended to increase the amount of the Heads Up, Don't Be Intoxicated Mini Grant Award to the city of Paducah from the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety from $21,000 to $24,000.
Second.
That's what we were talking about earlier.
Hello again, Mayor and Commissioners, Mr. City Manager. It is the same grant we had previously mentioned, and it's just simply an increase in an amount from $21,000 to $24,000. There are no other adjustments to the grant.
Good. I know, you know, people are, they like that program and they like the traffic enforcement program as well.
Yeah, it's been very positive lately. Getting a lot of attention. This program will be at the Rotary within the next two or three weeks. I don't remember the date, but it would be on a Wednesday. Be open to, open to the public at that point if they'd like to attend.
And today's a special day.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday Chief Barnhill, happy birthday to you.
And although we don't have meetings on Mondays, I understand there was another one yesterday I was told about.
Yep, but it wasn't my 40th.
Happy birthday, man. You guys were a little shy jumping in there.
You don't want me singing. I prefer to you. My voice is awful, too.
I need my agenda back.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and approving a settlement, release, and purchase pertaining to the real property located at 5065 Concord Avenue, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, involving Betty J. Owens and Allstate Insurance Company. This ordinance is summarized as follows. In this ordinance, the Board of Commissioners of the city of Paducah hereby approves and consents to the execution of the settlement agreement and release, purchase agreement and release, and quitclaim deed in exchange for the receipt of the insurance proceeds of $109,093.69 plus an additional $3,000 for demolition costs, plus a release of all contractual obligations between the city of Paducah and Betty J. Owens and the release of the reserved life estate. It is hereby found and determined that the transaction completes the acquisition of the property to be used for public purposes for the city. It is further determined that the mayor, on behalf of the city of Paducah, Kentucky, is hereby authorized to execute the transaction documents and any and other documents necessary to accomplish and consummate the settlement and purchase in accordance with this ordinance. Further, the Board of Commissioner, Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of the life estate reserved by Betty J. Owens in the amount of $43,959 as set out in the purchase agreement and quitclaim deed from Owens to City.
Second.
Okay.
That settles it?
That settles it.
And we'll have the property, we can move forward.
Settling the life estate in return for that, we get the deed and we'll have full control over the property from that point forward. A scenario that was not anticipated with respect to the house being destroyed by fire, so...
City Managers, report.
Just a couple of things. Mayor Kayler and I met with Judge Executive Newberry and Deputy Judge Harness today regarding animal control. And after a lapse of time since the task force completed its work, I think we can say that the city, county, and Humane Society are now fully committed to engaging in, in concerted negotiations to determine what can be crafted in terms of a working agreement for animal shelter services involving the Humane Society. So we expect to begin that in earnest within the next two weeks. The 911 board met today, I'm sure there'll be press coverage of that tomorrow, and heard a proposal from Kentucky State Police to provide dispatch services out of Post 2 in Mayfield. More information will be forthcoming on that. Just want to apprise you of that, as that board seeks to look for ways to improve operations and, and take that agency forward in the face of, of some of the things that were known and, and came out in the consultant's report here a few months ago. Might mention also, we had an event downtown last Saturday, and I believe this Thursday night, we have another music event on the, the stage at the foot of Broadway. Encourage people to come down there. Some very talented musical acts that the city has been able to gain access to. I know the one a couple of weeks ago, and this is a credit to Molly and the people involved in, in finding these acts, was someone that was between gigs, moving from Nashville up to, I think, Chicago for The Taste of Chicago. So we got him on the way there. So a little bit more resources put into that program puts us in a position to do those, those kind of things. So I believe the, the primary act Thursday night is one of Billboard's top 100 young acts to be looking out for, those, those kind of things. So I think we had about 200 people there last time on a Thursday night, so there's, there's room for plenty more. So if the weather's good, we hope to see a lot of people downtown for that. And we have an executive session.
We do.
We do.
Should I read?
Commissioners, anything? I did tweet, Duck Island is reborn. Anyway, you have the executive session.
Yes, ma'am, I do. I move that the board go into a closed session where discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as forbidden by KRS 61-8101G.
Second.
We will not be coming back for any action, so meetings adjourned.
No, I need to call the row.
Okay, row call.
Sorry.
Row call.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.